Good afternoon and welcome to the meeting of the whole. For this Tuesday, May 11, 2021. Good afternoon, my name is John French, I am the acting mayor and councillor. Item number one on our agenda is welcome to the Squamish Nation Territory Territory. And that council, there's an entertainment staff recommendation here that the council adopted the May 11, 2021 meeting of the whole agenda. Moved by councillor Penneywell, seconded by councillor Henderson, learning votes. See none, motion carries. We're operating under a ministerial order M192. And we have staff recommendation that pursuant to ministerial order M192, the district of Squamish is excluding eight person public attendance. At this May 11, 2021 meeting, on the basis that all public attendance in a manner consistent with public headquarters. And recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time. And the district is ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility and accountability at this meeting by the following means. This meeting is being live streamed, a video of this meeting will be available on the district's website for viewing on an on-demand basis. And council meeting move back. Moved by Mayor Elliott and seconded by councillor Penneywell. Are there any votes? See none, motion carries. And council members attending the meeting electronically are required to advise the chair of the meeting. The following circumstances, when the council member disconnects and or reconnects enters a next meeting. So that this can be recorded in minutes of meeting. Council members are to identify themselves when they advise the chair that they will. They wish to place all the state through his list with respect to a vote, council members are only required to state a vote, no statement is required, the member needs to be in favor. Council member shall put the telephone or computer on mute unless they wish to speak. Council member showing involved in and participating in the meeting. Council member shall text the chief administrative officer or corporate officer. They have technical difficulty with their telephone or computer. As in they need to be reconnected to the meeting. Meeting shall be recessed throughout two ten minutes if technical difficulties occurs on the district side which results in council members unable to be connected to the meeting. And that takes us to item number four on our agenda. Staff reports and first up is the community planning 2021 projects and work plan. And I believe that the director of community planning, Mr Valeniskas, is going to take us through this.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Yosel Valeniskas, Director of Community Planning, and today I'm bringing an update to council. On the planning and building projects for 2021 and some of them are in 2022. So perhaps the best way of doing this would be me to go over quickly. Over each item, just give council a brief update and we'll take any questions at the end of this. Thank you. So the first project, I'm hoping everyone can see my screen.
Yes, yeah.
Perfect. It's just a spreadsheet that's on the agenda. So the first project is the smart growth neighborhood incentive and this project focuses on reviewing densities. Along our transport transit network and in neighborhood nodes. So we are doing quite a bit of engagement this year on that front. And expecting to bring this to council for actual bylaw readings in the first quarter of 2022. Zoning Bala Phase Three is underway. And we're done with phase one and two, we've transferred some of the projects out of phase two into phase three. And this really is the housekeeping phase. Any issues that we need to fix in the zoning Bala related to phases one and two, there's always a little bit of cleanup that is required after big amendments. We're also including marine zoning and some other changes like electric vehicle charging requirements into that phase. So we are coming to a committee of the whole in June. And then expecting to wrap this up by the first, by the third quarter of 2021. Short-term rental implementation, so now we've got the regulations for short-term rental adopted. We're focusing on implementation and enforcement. So we've just wrapped up the temporary use permit process. And we're launching the bylaw enforcement aspect of implementation. We are coming to council this summer with updates overall on business licenses, temporary use permits and enforcement. So stay tuned for that. The dental park is a park project that's been led by planning staff. It's been slightly delayed, we have started some activities on site, so the tree clearing has been done. The tender is going up, I believe, this week for this project and construction is expected to wrap up by October. The technology transfer mission project, Tempest and Prospero, is being implemented this year, which is feeding quite a bit of staff resources. So we just onboarded the planning department. So we're now fully on the new system. And engineering is currently onboarding and building department will be next after that. So we're expecting by the, by this summer, we'll have planning and building on the new system. Neighborhood planning, so the Garville, Garvaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan is a project we are launching this year. We are coming to council in June for the initial introduction as well as bringing engagement plan. And the scope of the plan for council review and approval. And it is expected that that project will go into 2022. District plot five-on-five Neighborhood Plan is an application, but we did include it on this list just because it is. You know, it's a very substantial application, it takes staff resources. So council has already seen the intro to this application and we're coming up in July. We have an engagement plan for council's approval. One thing that we'll do this year is a regional context statement. So the regional district has done a review of the regional growth strategy. And whenever that happens, we have a limited amount of time to resubmit a regional context statement showing that we still comply with this new regional growth strategy. And that has to happen by October of this year. Agricultural planning limitation, essentially on our part, that's agricultural zoning. That project will be initiated in 2022, just because this year we are working on a, on other initiatives like marine zoning. As well as master marine action strategy access study. The wildfire development permit area is something that we've been working on. Council has seen this project in March last time. It is expected that we will be wrapping this project up by the end of this year. And a lot of it is to do with implementation of the project and also the fact that we're breaking it up essentially into a development permit area. And landscape that will regulate landscaping. So adoption is not expected till early next year. And this has an impact on the steep slopes development from area. Which was scheduled for initiation this year, but because of the complexity and delays with the wildfire development permit area and staff capacity. We have to delay that project to 2022. So essentially, we, once we're done the wildfire development permit area, we would start the work on the steep slopes DPA. Terms of reference for shade and view analysis. This initially was attached to another project, the streetscape standards. We are proposing to separate it just because we'll be quite involved and it will require budget, which we don't have a lot of for the streetscape project. And also capacity, so we're proposing to phase this project in once our streetscape. Standards project is wrapped up this year. Building bylaw updates, so we are currently giving a fees and charges bylaw update relating to building, related to building permits. Once we're done that, which I believe is potentially next week. We will initiate a building bylaw update and that's, we need to do some housekeeping, cleaning up of the bylaw. And we're also proposing to bring in a certified professional program, program in Squamish, which. Might allow for a faster process for larger building permit applications. But that has to be done as a bylaw change. So that project will start in Q3, we don't expect it to be very intensive, just because. You know, it's housekeeping and then the CP program and we don't expect that we would need to do a lot of engagement on both of those items. There's nothing significant changing in the bylaw. So that's why the timeline is fairly short. Downtown streetscape standards is something one of our planners is working on at the moment. We just finished not that long ago, the lighting amendments, the subdivision development control bylaw. And now we're working with the transportation, active transportation group to make sure that the projects that are happening in that department are aligned. And we expect to wrap this project up by the end of this year. Sign by law update, this is a project that's been on books for quite a few years now, it just gets bumped by other priorities. So we do expect that once we are finished with phase three of the zoning bylaw, that is something that we can put some resources in, it's all internal staff resources. The Valley Cliff childcare facility was something that was on the books last year and this year. We weren't successful in the previous grant application, so this project is essentially. It's a shovel-ready project that is waiting for the right grant opportunity. So we're keeping it on the books. OCP, official community plan, key performance indicators is something that we're working with IT, it's more of an operating project. But there is quite a bit of work going on in there, so we're showing it as an active project this year. Howie Sound Ocean Watch Task Force is also more of an operating project that staff are involved on a yearly basis, but it does have low, low impact on our resources. Marine action strategy administration, it's a standing item. This year we are planning to start work on a marine access study. And strategy development, and that is going to be following the adoption of marine zoning. Heritage protection framework, so the scoping for heritage protection is a project for this year. And we will be initiating that in the third quarter of, of this year, it's just about staff capacity and making sure that we're wrapping some projects up before we start others. And finally, we have, we've talked with council a few times about updating the community and managed contribution policy. And it sounds like we need to do a fairly major update. And for that reason, we are, the earliest we could start that is next year, just due to the commitments that we have on the books this year. And that project will require some budget, just to make sure that we can work with a land economist to. You know, to get real-time information as we're making these adjustments on, on the CACs. And that's it, thank you. Maybe I'll, I'll just leave the screen in share mode, just in case people want to refer to something in here, or should I stop sharing?
First, I think Mr Valeniskas, if I can stop sharing, because then I can see all the council members.
I can, I can, I can put them up there, I can, I can do that.
Miss Arthur is pointing the council members on the big screen, so you can leave this where it is. No questions? Mayor Elliott, then councillor Penneywell, councillor Stoner and councillor Anderson.
Councillor Race.
Thank you. Sorry, I keep hearing an echo. With regards to the zoning bylaw, I know when we get ADP minutes, we see often comments from Sarah Tipler about accessibility issues and they seem to happen. The same ones over and over again, so are there improvements we can make in phase three? To improve accessibility?
That's a great point, thank you. I think that the, where the, any changes have to live related to accessibility, because this is something regulated by the building code. Is that they have to be either in our subdivision development control bylaw. Or our development permit area regulation, so I think our zoning bylaw goes as far as it can with that respect. But it also, some of these, the issues we often see is off the properties on the streetscapes. So that is something that I will maybe in our streetscape standards project to, to have a closer look at.
Yeah, and maybe those other policy documents, so that as we renew them, we're incorporating these things into them.
That's a good point, thank you.
On. On the streetscapes piece, will we have an opportunity to review that?
Yes, certainly, we will be bringing that to council for, for draft review and then final endorsement.
Okay, thank you. And just a note to the corporate officer, I am hearing an echo in council chambers, so I can hear myself speaking. So I think there's a mic on in there that shouldn't be.
Okay, we're somewhat aware of that and have been trying to track it at this end, we'll continue that effort next year.
Okay. Yep, just related to childcare. Can, so we're learning that there's modular childcare units being designed and implemented on Vancouver Island. So do we have to put that funding proposal on the shelf until new grant opportunities come along? Or can we investigate things like that and apply through the new spaces fund?
Yeah, we can, we're, we're always scoping any grant opportunities, so just the, you know, we've. Tagged this Valeniskas project as a shovel-ready product, project that's on the books, but we would be looking at any other opportunities that come up.
Because we, we can't get our cost per space to the $40,000 threshold and they haven't changed that. And so I'm just wondering if we can look at other ways of building rather than building. In a traditional manner. And, and apparently some of these modular builds are being able to meet that threshold, so I'm just, I don't want to. Make, I want to make sure it's not on hold, but rather we're still looking at options to meet that $40,000 per space threshold.
Yeah, absolutely, I will pass that on to our, our, our main planner who's looking at childcare, Sarah McJanis.
Thank you, thanks Chair.
Thank you, and next I have councillor Penneywell.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Valeniskas, you, you mentioned that we would be getting a report on business permits and that sort of thing in the future. Will that include our short-term rentals, a summary of how quickly we saw uptake and, you know, was it existing? Airbnbs versus new ones or just some sort of breakdown, just wonder, we had a bunch of assumptions and ideas we wanted to test out. And I'm just wondering how the reality played out. We don't need that report now, but I'm just wondering if that would be part of that, or if we can expect a, a report of something like that at some point.
Through you Chair, absolutely, so we will be doing a report. On how many temporary use permits we received, how many got approved, how many business licenses we've issued since we brought the regulations in. I'm not sure if we will be able to narrow down to whether, you know, what proportion of these. Short-term rentals were previously in existence. Just because I know the data we were gathering was fairly general and now we're getting into very detailed assessments. But we will bring the data that we are able to spread.
Okay, thank you. Then the other question I just had, in the heritage protection framework scoping. Does that include defining or coming to some sort of definition, or have we already arrived of, of what heritage is? And just thinking, you know, different people have different ideas of what heritage is, whose heritage it is and that sort of thing. And I'm just not clear if, if that has been decided or to be decided.
Well, it's a scoping exercise, so we haven't decided anything at this point. Hopefully we get to do that and that process.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks councillor Penneywell, and next I have councillor Stoner.
Thank you, through the Chair, am I? I, I believe that this report usually comes with also an update on the development permits that are in stream. Did I miss that, or is that coming at a different time?
It is coming at a different time, part of the reason is that because we just switched to a new, this new software. For our process management and it produces different results, so there's some. Work that still needs to be done to iron out the, the differences between our old way of reporting and, and the new data that this software is producing.
Got it, thank you, and then I did have another question, which is a project that's not on the list, but a little over a year ago in March 2020, we had a discussion around kind of the downtown parking strategy and. The options for parkades and there was a council passed a motion around increasing the payment in lieu of parking up to $25,000 per space. And I was curious how and when that gets actioned.
I believe maybe if Gary Boston is with us today, maybe he can provide an update on, on where the parking strategy is going. Gary?
Sure, you can throw me in front of the car, yeah. That, that's something that we do need to, that we do need to bring back to council, it's probably going to be in Q3. It's a relatively straightforward piece of work, if it's, if we're only looking at the cash and low amount. We can certainly schedule that for Q3.
Thank you, Mr Boston. Councillor Stoner, anything else? Okay, so councillor Anderson is next and councillor Herper, I saw your hand.
And councillor Race was.
Councillor Race, your hand as well.
Thank you, Chair, I have two questions. Firstly, Mr Valeniskas, you've spelled out that. End of this year is the anticipated target for adoption of the wildfire DPA work. And you've mentioned that the steep slope DPA will be underway in the following year, 2022. How might this affect the sub-area planning process for lot 515 and in particular the wildlife DPA? How do, how, in terms of relative timing, these, these exercises?
Thank you, Mr Anderson, through Chair. That will have an impact likely on that application, however, I think in the bigger scheme of things, this is not the only. Threshold that needs to be cleared, policy-wise for that application, so I don't expect that it will, at the end of the day, impact. When that application is ready for council review.
Thank you. Chair, my second question is really in relation to the marine action strategy administration. We have not had a council update, presentation to council on. The implementation of the marine action strategy, save from zoning, since July 2019. My question is, can we confirm or reconfirm that the marine access study terms of reference will be coming before council?
Certainly, through you Chair, we will be, before we get too far down the road with. Or the channel down this, with this project, we will be coming to council to a committee meeting to discuss it.
Thank you very much, thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Anderson, and next I have councillor Herper, followed by councillor Race.
Thank you, councillor Stoner started down the line of questioning that I, that I had, and that same parking discussion, there was talk of exploring. Some pay parking options to control sort of the, the, the usage in the downtown core. And is that, would that be coming to us at Q3? And if, if so, is that something that's going to be involved in the, the budgeting process? Because I want to make sure that. If there is an actionable item there, we have the, the space to action it. I realize that might be for Gary, sorry.
Through the Chair, that, that will not be coming in Q3 of this year. The, a parking, a paid parking strategy is a much bigger item that we've got a budget in a subsequent year.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just like to clarify, if I may.
Yes, please.
We're showing projects for 2022 that were mostly on the books the previous year, so there may be other projects that we will need to start. Next year that are not on here.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, councillor Herper, that's everything for you. Councillor Race.
Thank you, two items, one is with respect to the item called House Sound Ocean Watch Task Force, which. Just a small point, is now called the Ocean Watch Action Committee. And it's now a subcommittee of the Biosphere Reserve Society. And my only point on that about ongoing expenses and so forth is. In the past, we, as in all the other local governments in the House Sound area, have contributed to the marine reference guide. And we divide those estimated amounts by amongst the different local governments by population. And so, for example, we had a $20,000 a year cost for that local government share. Squamish's share was just under $5,000 of that, West Van was 10 and the rest divided it up. That's going to be ongoing, because the reference guide will require hosting and maintaining. And we're just putting that together now, so these are small amounts, but just to have it sort of in the back of your mind that from time to time, there will be these types of requests coming through for. Something like the reference guide or other jointly undertaking, undertaken projects with other local governments in House Sound. But I, I expect the amounts, once we divide them all up, will be relatively modest. The second thing was with respect to the downtown, downtown streetscapes, and it refers to, let me just find it. Shoreline interface, and I was just wondering what that was or where that was, that, that might be included in that particular scope.
Yeah, if I may through Chair, this is not related to, you know, type of dike, dike facilities that may be required. This more related to landscaping, access to the shoreline, which will also be related to the, likely the mass administrative work that we're doing. So just want to clarify, it's not about flood protection, it's more about how do we design that around flood protection for, for, for human interaction.
So this is the walkways and things of that nature?
Correct.
And in that study, are we trying to highlight where we might want future access points or parks or things of that nature, or parklets? In future development along the waterfront?
I think that's a little bit, through you Chair, that's a little beyond the scope. We're trying to keep the scope tight and at this point, the biggest need we're having is, how do we deal with developments that we are reviewing in terms of public spaces? What's going into them? Not so much about where these public spaces need to be along the shoreline.
Okay, thank you. By the way, I mean, I can hear Robin's voice in the background, I'm not sure if there's, somebody needs to be muted.
Okay, thank you councillor Race. We're dealing with an audio issue in the chamber and while I was off camera, I think it got resolved, so. You should have improved sound quality at your end. Okay, so I wanted to follow the line of questioning that the mayor started into with the Valley Cliff childcare facility. And waiting for grants, not a huge fan of waiting, although I understand that that's maybe where we're at, or that is where we're at this. And I, I, just to put a cap on what the mayor started on, it's not just reassurance, is, is there anything else we could be doing? Or is this basically exactly where it is?
Well, the reason why this project is on, on the books is because it was a, a grant application that. Required pretty substantial resources and some budget. And now we have a shovel-ready project, so we left it on there, we're always looking for new opportunities that may not be related to this facility.
And just one final thought for me is the fact that, well, I'm sure staff is doing everything at the hand level, there's also the political level. And I know Mayor has been very active in lobbying every corner where lobbying is appropriate. So, Counselor, anything further? We, we have a staff recommendation.
I'm not sure if there was a staff recommendation.
Oh, you're correct. Just for update?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Valeniskas, that's everything?
That's it.
All right. Ms. Arthur's is giving you a holdup.
We have five minutes.
And we would like a five minute reset. So we will come back at, let's just call it 10 minutes after one. Okay, I'm back. Thank you for your patience. We may or may not have completely sorted out the technical issues in the chair. Our next item, under staff reports, is item number two, Garvaldi Springs Land Development. And Counselor Race, I'll just turn you.
Thank you, Chair. I have to declare a conflict in this. I am now as a potential purchaser. And that makes me conflict. And so I withdraw from this discussion. And my question is actually, do I get put in the waiting room or should I just get right out of the program?
Looking to Ms. Arthur's, Counselor Race needs to step out.
And then we'll call him to come back in.
So out completely, Counselor Race, and we will call on you when we're ready to bring you back in.
You'll phone me or email me?
We will phone you.
Okay, thank you.
And for this, I have this next item. I believe I'm announcing it to Mr. Buxton.
Yes, Counselor Race. There is an echo again. Okay, I think we're good. Just a couple of announcements from the Community Planning and Infrastructure Department. First is a new staff member, Kyla Larson, who's going to wave to you. She's joining us as an executive assistant and technical admin- and administrative advisor. So helping me out to sort of get my, get my act in order. So it's Kyla's second day. So she's still brand new to the organization, but has been a great help to me even, even in this short period of time. So welcome, Kyla, and okay, um, so you will see, you will see Kyla around from this point forward. One other note for council is just a brief update on building permits. And in terms of the, the process improvements, I know we had some issues sort of turn of the year with building permit issuances. I can let you know that we've hired two full-time positions and a casual position where Jonas has. And we're starting to see some impact in that department. We had 12 permits out the door in January, 20, in February, 28 in March, and 36 in April. So we're starting to get through the backlog and we're starting to see an improvement. I can't give you any firm turnaround times right now because we're, I say, we're, we're in the midst of, of getting the process sort of back to where it needs to be. But we'll continue to report on this as things improve. One of the next steps in the Building Department is the introduction of the Tempest permanent management system into that department. So again, that'll, that'll give us new reporting, reporting information. But that, that's the update from the Community Planning and the Building Department for now. Thank, thank you, Chair, for your meet.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Buxton. And now on the Garvaldi Springs Land Development Agreement requirements specifically for the park. We'll be bringing you back, Mr. Valeniskas.
Thank you, Chair. I am sharing my screen once again. I hope everybody can see. Can you see the presentation? Okay, thank you. There was a bit of a pause there. So again, my name is Jonas Valeniskas, Director of Community Planning. I'm bringing together today a report, short report, on the proposed waiving of public art process for the Garvaldi Springs Development. And that relates to the land development agreement that was registered for the property and the district and the developer entered to into this agreement when the rezoning was being adopted. So the land development agreement secures public art contribution onsite in the new district park that will, that will be built. And the construction of which should start soon to the value of $100,000. Back when we entered into the, into this agreement, we had the previous public art policy. And it had quite a bit of process that relied on our previous public art committee. So the land development agreement essentially mirrored that process and required four steps for selecting the, the artist. So one, the developer had to engage a consultant that was, that had to be approved by the Public Art Committee to prepare a plan for artist selection. After that, the, the consultant had to provide an artist's recommendation to the PAC. And then the artist to present public art concept to the public art committee. And then public art committee to approve the artist's selection. Now, when this issue came up with the Garvaldi Springs Development, we were in a, in a, in between periods from the old public art policy to the newly amended public art policy that we have today. And the developer had to select an artist. So we tentatively allowed the developer to explore a selection process without following the process that was laid out in the land developer agreement because that process wasn't available at the time. We did subject the, our discussions that this will have to be reviewed by council at some point. And sort of the earliest moment we had is now to, to present this to council. So we have a new public art policy. It requires that all public art located on public land be approved by the public art advisor. In the meantime, while this policy was being changed, the applicant had retained this Squamish Nation artist, a renowned Squamish Nation artist. So no approval was sought from the public art advisor as the process was not in place yet. However, staff believe that the selection of a Squamish Nation artist is well aligned with the intent of the policy and the intent of the LDA. It's really a bit of a best case scenario in terms of public art, artist selection. So staff recommend that the district waive those clauses A, B, C, and D, which is, which are outlined, outlined here. And, and that we proceed with the applicant's proposed selection process since they've already lined up a, an artist for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valeniskas. Counselor, any questions? Counselor Penningill?
Do we have a public art advisor position filled yet?
Yes, we do have a public art advisor. And I believe that's Amy Leimenberg.
Okay.
Staff have discussed this, this issue and, and the artist selection process with the, the advisor. And we've got some, some feedback around insurance and maintenance. So we are, we're going to be taking steps to make sure that there's insurance on the piece and that our operations department has a, a, a maintenance manual for it, if, if it requires any washing or, or things like that.
Okay, this just trying to dig into the policy and maybe this is for a parking lot item. I guess, you know, a conversation I'd heard in the past is that Holacton is a, is a great artist, but is a bit of a go-to as well. And so in the sense that art is meant to be thought provoking and so on, you know, are we doing enough to make sure that we're showcasing a variety of Squamish artists and that, you know, every builder isn't just sort of picking the safe bet. And I think I've seen a few other projects where Holacton is proposed as the artist, I believe. And so not, I don't have a particular problem with this, but it just raised that flag about seeing that, that name come up again and making sure that that's just not the automatic name for all of our public art projects going forward.
Next I have Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. My topic is the selection process, and I would like to follow the point raised by Counselor Penningill. The report suggests that the process outlined in the LDA is no longer possible. The, the process to cite it, who will, the, a public art committee who will prepare a plan for artist selection? Well, that includes a, a competitive process presumably. And that is still available. And the, the description or the citing of the new art, public art policy approved last year, I'll quote that, the, the public art process, including design, development, and installation, I'd just like to highlight that tendering and selection is missing from that statement. And I believe it's very important. In the public art policy, there is under section 3.3D, I'll quote, initiating public art competitions. So my concern is a competitive process. And where are we situated in, in relation to that objective? And it's an objective shared by all public art programs throughout BC, but certainly in the Lower Mainland. It's a happy outcome that we have. It's a beautiful piece. And as has been mentioned, a well, well-known artist of high stature. But we have, in fact, over the last three private development projects, the artists that have been selected are a father, a son, and a cousin. This has me concerned. And it's a concern I, I take it is, has been suggested also by Counselor Penningill. What is the plan for the future? For our public art programming as a whole? And I'll cite the City of Richmond Public Art Program, which applies to all these, these items I'll cite apply to their private development public art programs as well. Is the public art program seeks to ensure fair, informed, and competitive artist selection. And there are three methods, open competition, invitational competition, and direct commission, which is not recommended on city property, which is what we're talking about here, a civic park. So I guess I'm really registering a concern rather than a question. But I find that throughout the presentation of, and selection of policies that we're missing the terms competitive, competitive. And this is something very important. And I think that if we're going to aspire to a mature public art program in Squamish, and many communities are not there, and we're not either. But this is an important ingredient, and we need to be mindful of this as we go forward in future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. And next, Mayor Elliott.
So just to be clear, Mr. Valeniskas, the public art committee no longer existed, and the new policy hadn't started yet. It was in the works. And so not to hold up their projects, Polygon has moved in this direction. But going forward, the new policy exists.
Through your chair, that, that's absolutely right. So it is a bit of an exception that this project, the public art has to be delivered by the time they're getting occupancy for the phase one. So they had to proceed with some form of artist selection while we were revising the, the policy. But going forward, that process outlined in the policy, which requires consultation and approval with the public art advisor, would be followed.
Thank you. Just a reminder to my colleagues that we can all be mindful of things, but if you want something to change, you have to make a motion and change it and refer it somewhere. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Elliott. Anybody else? As I'm looking to put myself on the list? Seeing none. So from the report, we learned that a maintenance manual for the artwork will be created and the report notes the piece. That the maintenance may be required to be done by the Public Works Department. So that's not very exact and precise. So I, I'm wondering, at what point will it be determined if Public Works will maintain this practice?
Through your chair, so we will be working with all the relevant departments once we have the, the, the manual for maintenance. This public art piece will be in one of our key parks that will be subject to regular maintenance. And I think that we haven't heard a concern from our operations department that this is not something that we, they would be able to maintain at this point. But those discussions are ongoing.
So if it's not our Public Works Department doing maintenance, who would do it?
Nobody else. It's, it's going to be on district property. This piece of art will, will be up to the district to maintain.
And the district would be responsible for covering maintenance costs as well?
The applicant is, is covering a portion of overall maintenance cost for the park. But it's not specific to different components located in that park until the development is being built. Once the development is built, then it would be fully district maintenance budgets.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And anything else from council? Any other questions? Counselor Anderson?
So following up from, from Acting Mayor French, the point made regarding the Public Works Department, there is a piece of public art that has required some maintenance in the district. Doesn't really matter where it is, but we're all well aware of it. And a person took the, a plaque that was, had fallen off the, the piece to the Public Works Department. And at that time, this is about a year and a half ago, they stated that the Public Works Department cannot be involved, would not be involved in maintenance of public art pieces. So I just take Counselor French's point is very valid. And I take it also from Mr. Valeniskas' points that this is something that's evolving. But I just thought I'd highlight that. It has been an ongoing discussion. Thank you.
And so this time, we really do have a staff.
We do, yes. And that is that council waive those four clauses for artist selection process in lieu of the artists already selected or proposed by the applicant.
And is anybody interested in moving that staff recommendation? Moved by Counselor Stoner? Seconded by? Counselor Herford? Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just quickly say that I'm supportive of this direction, knowing just the awkwardness and timing that came forward with this development agreement. And so appreciate the effort that has been put in and that the process that the developer has gone through in terms of securing that public art community. I hear my colleagues' concerns around the broader policy, but I do think that we now have a public art selection policy in place. And that would be the place to address concerns around selection process if, if need be. So I will support this motion. Thank you. And there is still a little bit of an echo.
Oh, okay, thank you. It might be me. We're not sure. Any other discussion? Seeing none. I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valeniskas.
Thanks.
And I'm happy to report, we're a little ahead of time. So our next item, number three under staff reports, is strategic plan slash organizational plan reporting schedule. And this Lende is presenting that.
Thank you, Chair. I'm hoping that it's included in the agenda. And it's an updated annual plan of all of the reports that staff are, have previously brought to council in the draft form. And it's an updated annual plan of all of the reports that staff are, have previously brought to Council in draft form. And I'm just checking that before I keep going, you can hear me.
Okay.
And you have a mic right in front of you.
Okay.
We have the owl right in front of us.
How's that? You better? Okay, fabulous. So part of the agenda, you receive an updated list of all of our scheduled reports to Council. And in red, what has changed is our strategic planning reporting. And we wanted to bring this to work for Council endorsement. What we're finding with staff is that the cadence of bringing strategic organizational plan updated quarterly is too quick in terms of the time spent updating and reporting versus actually doing the work. So we'd like Council enhancement, that if we were to create semi-annually mid-year, so at this point it would be July. And then at the beginning of year. And then certainly if there was anything sort of pivotal or important, certainly we'd wait that specific timeframe.
We just lost the last bit.
Yeah, you. All right.
Living your two doors out now.
Looking for endorsement. Oh, that'll be.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's okay. To bring the strategic organizational plan, regular reporting, semi-annually. And then certainly anything of importance or major change.
Counselor Stoner, did you hear that? Okay. All right.
There's two.
Counsel, any questions? Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. At the bottom, it says annual updates presented in memo format, timing to be determined. When will that be determined?
That's a great question, actually. I was focused on the strategic plan aspect of this. We will, we can bring that back to Council.
So one thing to keep in mind is that council engages with staff before the summer break to help direct the budget. And so some of those things will be important to council to see before staff start to prioritize things in the budget. So that's one thing to keep in mind. And then the only other change that I would make is that I'm a bit nervous about the climate action plan being only updated twice a year. And wondered if that could fit in with Cal's update in number four, so that it comes in March, July, and October, since it is a really important piece of, of work and things are changing quickly.
We can't hear Linda at all.
No, you didn't hear anything.
Sorry. It's Council.
Thank you for the suggestion, Mayor Elliott. I would like to follow up with Mr. Buckston to make sure that we can submit to that. But certainly I don't see it.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. So I'm putting you on the list. I have Counselor Anderson next, unless Mayor Elliott, you have anything else? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
I have, my first question is, Ms. Glendee, you have reference to the Marine Action Strategy under number one, Strategic Organizational Planning includes some mass terms. Quote, and also under number five, the quarterly community planning applications such as Marine Action Strategy items. My question is, because of its density and topicality, if you like, and it has thirty-two short-term action items, the Marine Action Strategy, that perhaps it deserves to be listed among the items at the bottom. And whether that might be considered to highlight it on its own, in other words. And I suppose that's the suggestion. The other question I would have is that these items in the list at the bottom, the annual updates presented. Mayor Elliott has pointed out that these are topics that will be important for our fall budget. But also they are important to council in that they are major policy areas. And I'll quote from the staff memo on December twenty-second, when we discussed the delegation by law, that by delegating some of its routine administrative responsibilities to staff, council can focus and streamline its agenda toward its strategic priorities and policy decisions. It strikes me that the topics listed at the bottom are prominent, important, and in dense, if you like, with the number of things going on with them, recommendations, action items. Is that council would like, I suggest, some opportunity to discuss these. And so my question is, can we request these memo updates be pulled for discussion and presentation? Thank you.
The short answer is yes. And again, my apologies that it still says to be determined on both. I will circle back with staff on when those can be brought to Council. And we will clarify those memo pieces. Appreciate that council wants those updates and input before the budget, absolutely. And in terms of our frequency of reporting, is it balanced between how much staff spend preparing reports versus actually doing the work? And we are trying, we're working with this schedule to strike that balance, and we'll take that.
Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Glendee. I do appreciate that with staff's workload and, and work planning. However, one instance, the Marine Action Strategy, we haven't actually had a presentation in nearly two years. And I'll just highlight that as an example of something that maybe deserves some council attention in, in a presentation format. Thank you.
Next I have Counselor Stoner.
Thank you, through the chair. I have no problem moving the strategic organizational planning updates to be semi-annual. I think that makes sense and appreciate that quarterly updates are probably too rapid to move for staff. I just did want to pick up on the comment that Mayor Elliott made around the climate change component. And how we just make some comment around how we keep that apart. So in the strategic plan, it's broader than just climate change. It's the planet and the environment pillar. That also includes our waste reduction strategy, reducing the number of folks who are commuting for employment. So just want to make sure that that doesn't get lost and the strategic plan just becomes focused on the C cap. But also recognizing that I don't want to like double burden Ian with reporting for the strategic plan as well as the C cap. So I'm not, I don't have a solution there, but I do think that there needs to be some overlay and separation between the two.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, that does make sense. The challenge could be that Ian ends up reporting by plans, is counter to what we're trying to achieve. So I don't have a solution either, but if council's comfortable leading it for staff to figure that out and bring back a suggestion to meet the interests of keeping the important C cap reporting more frequent and semi-annual, but not losing the entirety of planet and the environment in the strategic plan. I don't have an answer on the quiet for that, but I think we can ask.
Thanks, Counselor Stoner. That's all. Anybody else? Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, just add quickly in, in general. Think this is a reasonable plan. I am interested to see for some of these reports exactly what they look like. And I'm presuming there'll be some iteration there. And I think for me on some of them, even the ones that I've been paying particular focus to, it may be the sort of things we are measuring as opposed to the frequency that matters a little more. And so just making sure we're, we're measuring the right things. And I think this is a good starting point, though.
Thanks, Counselor Penningill. And not seeing anybody else, I'll just share my own thoughts, consistent with what we've heard already. I'm comfortable with the reporting schedule that is proposed. I'd rather see staff doing real work on the real issues as opposed to a lot of work prepared for a lot of meetings that are maybe more than what we, from a meeting and update regularly. Ms. Glendee, there is no staff recommendation attached to this item. So do you have everything you need out of this conversation?
I do. Thank you. Through the chair, and this is iterative and we remain open to council feedback as the reports come through and how they look.
Excellent. Thank you. And I see that you're next up for item number four as well. Our CMP Lower Mainland District Mayor's War on Coffee.
Thank you. I'm just going to provide an overarching summary of the mayor's board of the Lower Mainland Division of Arts and Meeting. If at any time you can't hear me, I'm going to rely on the chair to tell me that.
Very good.
So I, I'll be as brief as possible and remain open to questions. So Chief Superintendent Stephen Thatcher, for those who knew him, has moved on to a different job at ECOM. So they recognize his achievements. And Maureen Levy, who we've worked with in different capacity, is now Chief Superintendent of the Division. The auxiliary program still is on hold and no changes to that status at this time. They didn't have anything else to provide. The next item was the transition of City of Surrey. And the Executive Director of the Policing and Security Branch provided an update. And similarly, they talked about, you know, the impacts to other municipalities, such as Squamish or all the other ones that will continue to rely on the RCMP and the impact that will have in terms of shared costs, which is primarily the administration costs and ITs. All I can say was that it's too soon to predict what the impact will be once Suri transitions, but that it's a work in progress. Of course, there's concerns around morale with the different municipalities in the Lower Mainland, with the salary, et cetera. Surrey New Police, but again, this is all speculation and it was really just a work in progress. So they passed a motion to get timely updates. And then they gave some more operational updates. Talking about police board appointments and process in the Lower Mainland and the different municipal models. And again, it's a work in progress. And there was talk of a subcommittee of this committee to deal with that. It doesn't necessarily apply to Squamish because we don't have. But in terms of, of that, you know, again, it's more, it was really like, it's a work in progress. I was texting Yerick when they were talking about this, trying to get up to speak on it, and he was completely confused. So it wasn't the most straightforward thought place that they thought. I didn't get the impression that it really affected Squamish at this point, so I did. Operational updates from Chief Superintendent Levy, they talked a lot about check well-being, street checks, mental health, and just the idea that, you know, a new model is needed. And, you know, like me showing up with firearms, guns drawn to mental health problems is not appropriate anymore. And they talked about R sixty-seven in Surrey. Really likely to make significant changes in the service delivery, recognizing that that's a long, long day, long-term vision, but ultimately working with the province and the feds, what that looks like and where the funding comes from for policing and how it's created, setting services to live that way.
Mayor Elliott, did you hear that last bit?
We, we tend to lose the last part of Linda's sentences. It's like she starts to mumble, except I know she's not mumbling, but it just like trails off.
It's the flaw of the owls, I'm afraid.
We, we tend to lose the last part of Linda's sentences. It's like she starts to mumble, except I know she's not mumbling, but it just like trails off.
It's the flaw of the owls, I'm afraid.
Okay, I'll repeat that again. So there was quite a lot of discussion around the mental health, addiction, homelessness model and the current service delivery of police and the limitations of, of funding. And recognizing that a long-term vision is to shift that model and work with the province and the federal governments on different ways of funding and setting up service to incorporate a more holistic model. And currently, you know, the discussion was that it's a piecemeal approach depending on the municipality and the funding that's available. And they want to switch that to be more consistent throughout all municipalities with our CMP. No solutions were put forward other than, again, just keeping it top of minds in terms of the unimportant conversation to be had. There was an update on ITs, motion to receive that. They were talking about some major police issues in the Lower Mainland, primarily some protests, which I know we're seeing one in May potentially, so that was timely for Eric to be on that call as well. Nothing violent, just took resources. Really interesting, crime stats in the Lower Mainland overall through COVID are down. However, hate crimes are up one hundred and eighty-seven percent in Vancouver and one hundred and seventy-two percent in B.C. And I made a note to look into how Squamish compares, and I have yet to find out. But they talked a lot about how that is a direct result of COVID. And shocking, because the threshold for any crime is quite high. Maple Ridge shared their community model around bylaw, which is quite interesting, and I'm going to share that with Dan. And that was it. If there are any other questions, I would be happy to provide them.
Okay, we'll start with Mayor Elliott, and next I have Counselors.
Thank you, Linda, for that summary. Just for a bit of clarity, the federal, at the federal level, they have released a document on a new auxiliary policing program. But B.C. has always felt that they might go it alone or design their own. So there's, so if you're talking about that, you should be aware that there's a federal document or a plan that B.C. may or may not adopt, is what I heard. And then can you say more about why Maple Ridge shared their bylaw model? Is it radically different?
Yes, it's a, it's a community-centric, it came born out of a lot of similar issues that we're dealing with in Squamish around homelessness and addiction. And they've got community service officers, and they have bylaw coverage sixteen hours a day, seven days a week. And focused on a, like a wraparound bylaw service. It was interesting because one of the mayors asked, is this enabling downloading by the auxiliary program? Is this, is this your response to it? And Maple Ridge said no, I guess it's a debate, but it is quite a compelling model if the funding is there. But it's essentially, it's not too far away from what we'd like to do. It's just that obviously they have more funding and the coverage is sixteen hours a day, seven days. And it's. And it's like a customer service, community outreach model. And so that's why they shared it on heels of conversation around.
Counselor Reese.
Thank you. I was just wondering if there was any discussion around their overall numbers and availability of recruits and are they below complement in different places?
That was not discussed at this meeting.
Thank you.
Counsel, anybody else? Yeah, please.
I will add this along that line of thinking, though, they did talk about they're currently surveying their membership, the RCMP officers, because their concern is around retention with this three transition. For obvious reasons that we're going to lose a lot of RCMP officers to Surrey, and that will further complicate or make it difficult to keep compliments up in the other municipalities. No solutions, though. They're just surveying.
Very good. And so unless anyone has anything further on this issue, I'll move on to item number five under staff reports. And this issue also pertaining to justice, bylaw enforcement policy amendments. And with Sergeant, I believe you have a verbal update for us.
I do. Can you, can you hear me?
Very well.
Very well, see, and I am 10 feet away and it's not right in front of me, so I don't get it. I am just going to share my screen. Okay. Thank you, Chair. I'm Robin Arthur, General Manager of Corporate Services, and I'm here to present on the Visitor Management Enforcement Policy. Last week, council provided first three readings to the suite of bylaws introduced to help manage the seasonal, typically recreation-related visitor camping issue that we experience here annually in Swamish. At that same time, council asked that staff develop enforcement policy framework, which outlines the criteria for how our bylaw enforcement officers will act to enforce this seasonal camping issue. Council will receive the policy prior to introduction of the bylaws for adoption next week. So by way of a little bit of background, because council might not be aware, in March 2016, the Office of the Umbuds Person published a Bylaw Enforcement Best Practices Guide for local governments in response to the significant number of complaints that they were receiving from the public related to lack of consistency and fairness with bylaw enforcement. As part of this best practice, it was recommended that local governments adopt their own enforcement policy to guide how regulatory bylaw complaints are investigated and act upon. This resulted in the district adopting a bylaw enforcement complaint policy in July 2017. And this policy guides enforcement priorities for bylaw enforcement and provides consistency and certainty to the officers who are responding to the complaints and applying the enforcement. The policy lays the foundation for response to complaint-driven enforcement action and officer self-generated enforcement action within the district boundaries. So the enforcement policy is based upon a couple of high-level principles. And that's that the district promotes enforcement philosophy which seeks voluntary compliance, which is often achieved through education as opposed to heavy-handedness, and information and non-penalty enforcement, including providing a reasonable timeframe for people to comply depending on the situation. And secondly, that more direct enforcement approaches may occur in situations, oh, there's a tape on there, may occur in situations where health, safety, and security are happening. And, you know, an example of this, which might be good for each situation, would be an off-leash dog. So an off-leash dog, an enforcement officer approaches them, asks them to leash the animal and keep the animal leashed. However, if they recognize that this is a dangerous dog or a dog that's previously bitten somebody, they may take ticketing or seizure approach. So they apply their discretion, their experience, their common sense in situations. So for visitor management enforcement, on the screen you'll see these are the criteria that are going to be the foundation for the policy amendment. Because what we're going to do is not set up a separate policy, but embed our visitor management enforcement criteria into our larger bylaw complaint enforcement policy. The principles within the overarching enforcement policy are carried through to this visitor management enforcement, and it will primarily remain complaint-based. There will be opportunity for proactive enforcement, but that too will include conversations and education as the first line in seeking compliance. As always, our officers take a common sense approach to seek compliance versus more heavy-handed tactics. Priority response is when complaints are received, see officers attending where there are health or safety violations, significant negative impacts on adjacent properties, general nuisance such as noise and garbage. And often, it also comes through requests from other agencies such as the RCMP or Flynnworth, for example, Forestry Lands Resource Management. So the other thing that, you know, we also had discussed was, of course, you know, that we're going to be introducing nighttime patrols and that these nighttime patrols will primarily focus on the seasonal problem areas. And so that's the blue area in the schedule on the, on the schedule to the camping bylaw. So if you've had a chance to look at that, I can take questions. I can stop. Should I stop sharing my screen, Chair? I can put the.
Yes, please. Counsel, any questions? Counselor Harper.
Thank you, first of all, for this, for this update. That's very helpful. I'm curious about, it doesn't say which, specify which bylaws, as there's a sort of a suite of bylaws, both ones that we've discussed recently and potentially many others that sort of fall under this visitor's management. So is the, is that sort of exclusion of specific bylaws in this policy, in this piece of policy on purpose, or is it meant to only apply to certain bylaws such as the ones we discussed last week?
Through the chair. So this is just the update. It's not the policy itself. Sorry about that if it was confusing. For visitor management, it will apply to any of the bylaws which apply to visitor management. So it will be the traffic bylaw, it will be the new camping bylaw, it will be the noise bylaw, which already exists, you know, and any other tools that currently helped us previously in past seasons to manage any bylaw infractions.
Thank you, Counselor Harper. Counselor Penney.
Yeah, just in terms of these bylaws, and I'm sort of having trouble a little bit to separate all the topics. So if I run over, Chair, maybe you can constrain me. Who, I'm curious about who has the authority, but also the responsibility and maybe different answers to enforce these and like the bylaw RCMP. And so who does this policy apply to and who's responsible for and who has the authority to enforce these different bylaws?
Thank you for that question. So primarily, this is for bylaw enforcement, our bylaw enforcement office. But it also guides the RCMP. We've worked hand in hand with them when they are enforcing our bylaws for us. So for example, there are certain sections of certain bylaws that allow for enforcement by other agencies, you know, such as Conservation Officer Service or the RCMP. And we always make them aware of our enforcement policy and what our principles for voluntary compliance are. So historically, when, when they have their meetings about bylaw changes, for example, because the bylaw enforcement office is in the detachment and they attend briefings and things like that, they will share, oh, there's been a change here, there's been a change there, and work hard to make sure that everybody is on the same page. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, thanks. So it sounds like both RCMP and bylaw then have responsibility and authority, a little more responsibility on the bylaw, but the RCMP still does have some responsibility for enforcing these bylaws.
Yeah, they, they tend to, you know, defer to enforcement when our bylaw enforcement staff are working, of course, and they use our bylaw enforcement tools when bylaw enforcement is not working. And an example of that might be a noise complaint coming in on a nightclub. And although that might not be happening right now, it happens frequently in non-COVID times. And so the RCMP attend and they use the noise bylaw tool to help out. You know, sometimes they even will issue a ticket or get help or bylaw enforcement officers issue a ticket if it's a repeat offense.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you through the chair, and thanks to staff for bringing a verbal update on this. I think this is going in the right direction, helps to clarify some of the enforcement priorities. I guess my outstanding question is, we make a differentiation between the homeless enabling or enabling the homeless to put up temporary shelter where need be and specifically excluding camping from visitors. And I'm curious how bylaw enforcement differentiates those two scenarios on the ground.
So regularly during our, especially the warmer months, they, bylaw enforcement office come upon people who are homeless and have set up some temporary overnight shelter. And they also come across very frequently visitor, people to the, to the community. And they also are familiar with who our current homeless folks are. They, that's part of some of the outrage and some of the groups that they're connected with right now. Typically, you can tell, you know, it's, it's a common sense approach. They'll approach them, they'll talk to them about who they are, where they're from. You know, if somebody was camping in a park, for example, they typically don't have, they, they have nicer equipment. I mean, I, I don't want to sound like I'm editorializing on this or anything, but, you know, they're through conversation and observation, they can see who the different people are and have a conversation with them and ask them to move to a campground. They can talk to the people who are more resident in our community and talk to them about resources that are available or what the rules are around being in district parks. Does that answer your question?
It does. I guess it does also raise some concerns. I appreciate that observational approach is part of bylaw enforcement. But I'm also very aware that Helping Hands takes donations for tents, for example, for the homeless. And so I don't think that judging somebody based on the type of equipment that they have is fair. So perhaps just reiterating that it is much more kind of an outreach and education approach and understanding who these folks are. And when, I don't have the slides in front of me, but going back and making sure that that language is in there, I think would be helpful for our community to see.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
Just a comment, if I might, following up on Counselor Stoner's point a bit. And I don't want to prejudge the policy now, but I am sort of hoping to see that this is very focused on visitor management and makes it very clear that that is the intent in how we describe the priorities.
Yeah, I think, I do think we have to be careful in that regard. And we also have to acknowledge that our bylaw officers may not always get it right, but they will always try and fix it. So I, I'm not sure that adding language helps. I think the policy covers what their role is and that there is always some individual judgment at play. And so I don't want language to constrain or to confuse. The focus is on visitor management. And then we also have supported an application by Helping Hands for their community ambassador program. And if successful, that also involves our bylaw and RCMP in a collaborative project to, you know, build ties and build knowledge about who is here that is homeless. And so I think there's other pieces going around this. And I, I don't want to get too focused on trying to define everything in this policy. This policy is to guide and, and not make everything, you know, it's too difficult an issue to, to put a box around it and prescribe behavior or prescribe choice. So I think we should leave it open, but with the right principles and policies in place. So what I see before me works. Knowing that, yeah, they might get it wrong from time to time, but I actually think they do a great job. And I don't expect that would change.
Thank you. Counselor Stoner.
Thank you through the chair. I did have one other question, which may not be actually appropriate for this conversation and better for when the bylaw comes back. But I'm just taking clarification on the blue area again, because the communications that have been put out by staff and in this presentation referred to it as implement or enforcement priority area. Whereas in our discussion about the bylaw last week was that it was an area where the blue area means no camping and includes the areas where the homeless have the right to shelter. So is it both? Is it an implementation area or is it one or the other?
It's, it's both, is how you described it. So it's typically seasonally, that's the area we receive the most complaints. It is also the area where the homeless have some opportunity to erect temporary overnight shelter as long as they meet the criteria identified in the bylaw. But we, that, it generally is where we receive the largest number of complaints about seasonal camping.
Counselor Stoner, that's good. I have Counselor Reese up next.
Thank you. So this issue, as you, as we all know, has raised a lot of, I think, concern is a fair word in the community. And it's been some time since I read that Supreme Court of Canada decision, and I don't want to sound like I'm giving legal advice. But my takeaway on this issue has been the right to shelter is based on there not being an alternative. And so now that Vancouver and Victoria, for example, have increased the number of shelters, shelter availability, they have now they're in a or shelter availability, they have, now they're in a position to enforce, uh, the use of public spaces for shelter. Do we take that position at all in our enforcement? If we had, we've spent a lot of effort in the last few years, uh, and continue to create, um, decent shelter for people, uh, and we have developments along that line, uh, for various, um, places on the housing spectrum. So I would hope that there was available shelter. I mean, I, I know that there may not be at certain times, but if we did have available shelter space, would our officers be permitting, uh, camping, uh, in these public areas? Camping's the wrong word, sheltering in these public areas.
Through the Chair, so, um, appropriate alternatives or options is somewhat subjective. Our shelter is a low-barrier shelter, and what that means is, um, people don't have to be sober in order to be there. And it also is a very, uh, small-room, closed shelters in an open area, and some people don't do well in confined spaces. So if you are somebody who is trying or working on your, um, addiction issues, and you don't want to be around other people who, in a low-barrier situation, and you don't have the means to go to, uh, for example, uh, Mission Union Gospel down in, uh, Vancouver, which is high barrier, you need somewhere safe where you feel safe that you can go. And the courts have said that even if you have a shelter or you have, uh, covered structures for people, if they don't feel safe, they can be in a public space. And that's why, yeah, under the, um, the, the umbrella of alternatives, we have to be able to identify and allow, uh, homeless to stay overnight temporarily in some of our outdoor spaces. And, um, so it's, it's, it's almost like a bit of a, a rolling thing as far as, um, what that alternatives means.
Counsel Reese? Follow-up, okay, thank you. Counsel Penney though.
Yeah, thanks, and again, if, if this is just a conversation for next week, that's fine. I, I was trying to understand the blue area. And what I thought I had saw in some of our more recent communications was that, yes, the homeless can shelter in the blue area, but they can also shelter outside of the blue area. And so, then I, I think that means that the blue area is really just that enforcement priority at the end of the day. I, is that correct?
It's also where there's no, there is absolutely no camping. I mean, there's no camping the rest, it is, yes, you're right.
Okay, thank you. And, and the, the other piece, I'll just mention in terms of the policy, I, one of the struggles in the, um, the, so the street bylaw, um, is the, the staying in a vehicle for not more than an hour. And so I was looking for the policy perhaps to, um, present a solution in terms of focusing that on, uh, managing visitation as opposed to, you know, incentivizing someone who's impaired to go and drive. And, and so, I, I take the mayor's point about putting too much on the policy and how we distinguish and where that gets a bit hairy, but at the same time, I'm just trying to find a solution to some of those concerns, and, and if the policy isn't the place for that, that's fine, but I am looking for a solution to some of those things. And, um, so just sort of raise that for context as you're working on the policy.
Thank you, Counsel Penney though. Counsel? Mayor Elliott, did you have your end up?
No, it's all right, I'll hold my comments till next week.
Okay, very good. Then I believe that takes us to the end of this topic. And, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Herford and seconded by Counselor Stoner, saying opposed. So motion carries, and we'll reconvene at 3:15 for the special.